Stand up. All right. I will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Picking up with the agenda, we have department reports from Water and Sewer and the Department of Public Works. We have the Town Administrator’s update. We have action items to approve the appointment of Leah Corvo as a full-time dispatcher. Consideration and possible action on the police chief’s employment agreement. Consideration and possible action regarding to authorize the town administrator to engage in discussion with DISH. Consideration and possible action on the appointment of Matthew Orbits as a heavy equipment operator. Consideration and possible action to approve the appointment of Jeremy Chenier as a labor driver. Consideration and possible action to appoint Andrew Corbey as a mechanic equipment operator. Consideration and possible action on discarding certain surplus items listed later. Consideration and possible action on a 2024 seasonal population increase estimation form for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts ABC Commission. Consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute the contract with Leeds Group Incorporated to deliver treated roadside road salts at the price of $94.70. Consideration and possible action to accept a generous donation of $250 from the Federated Church of Sturbridge and Fisdale to the Sturbridge Police Youth Account. Consideration and possible action on a donation in the amount of $250 from the Federated Church of Sturbridge and Fisdale to the Sturbridge Fire Department. Consideration and possible action to accept the resignation of Elisa Bowden from the Special Events Committee effective after the first meeting in January 2024. Consideration and possible action to open the special town meeting warrant. Consideration and possible action to close the special town meeting warrant. Consideration and possible action for the Board of Selectmen to review and sign the 2024 annual license renewals. Old business, new business, correspondence, approval of minutes, assistance forum, and then we will adjourn. With that, first, I’d just like to take a moment of silence to just keep in our thoughts and prayers since it’s the holiday season, the people who are in wars abroad and anybody who today might be struggling with the severe weather events. So please just take a moment to keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Public service announcements. Mary Blanchard, Annie.
Yes, I just want to recognize and send our sympathies to the family of Pat Jeffries, who passed away. Pat served several years on the ZVA. In the time I served with her, Pat was always ready for meetings, very knowledgeable, and very fair, and she made the best cookies in town.
She was great. Thank you, Mary. Mary, darling.
Merry Christmas, right? We’re not getting health and happiness and God’s blessings to everybody in Sturbridge.
Jason.
Just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays, and I hope everybody a healthy New Year.
Great. Mary Lou.
Merry Christmas to everyone out there and a very happy and healthy New Year, and for those working fire, police, EMS, stay safe out there, guys.
I will also, first, just about Pat Jeffries, just very sad to lose her. She did a lot for the town. And again, just on Mary Lou’s point, everybody stay safe, you know, celebrate, enjoy yourselves, but, you know, be safe. With that, I think we can go to department reports. Shane, I think you are up, my friend.
Good evening.
How are you doing?
Cool. So let’s just start right into it with the weather, right? Right now, we lost a couple pump stations. We got power back at eighteen. The Route 20 pump station, I got trucks over there trying to keep up with the flow, which they’re doing, I expect, and I’m hoping that by like eight o’clock, the station will be able to handle the flow itself. The treatment plant itself, with the technology we have, there’s good things and bad things. The good thing is that technology loves flow, and the plant actually is running better than when we have less flow, so I don’t expect any issues there. And honestly, just in talking to the managers and other projects we got in this area, we’re in very good shape compared to what they’re going through, so I don’t expect any overflows, any SSO, so with all the rain we had, that’s good news. Besides that, you have my operation reports for both October and November, and I’ll answer any questions that you might have on them.
Anybody have any questions for Shane?
I did.
I just want to acknowledge, we do it periodically, but for people watching, under safety, they’ve worked 34 years and 10 months with only one lost time accident. And we brought that to attention before, but we have different residents that watch, and that’s pretty amazing.
No, and it’s, you know, the only number one goal is safety. That comes first. Everything else comes after, so, and I appreciate the acknowledgement. One of the things I will put out, and last time I was here, I told you we were having CBOD issues and BOD issues, and I brought in our technical team, and there’s a pretty comprehensive report in last month’s report. The bottom line is, we don’t have a smoking gun. We are down a different limit season, which means our limits go up higher. We’re trying different things to see if we can find a solution. It could be that it’s the leachate. That’s one of the things that they pointed out. You should be aware that there’s not many towns that treat leachate at their own facility, and you’ve had the luxury of doing that for years. So I’m not saying that is the issue, and I also believe when we’re able to run three tanks at a time, that we won’t have this problem. Now, can I say that 100%? No. But the tanks due to be repaired in February, we’ll turn that third tank on, and we’ll have to see how it goes, because we don’t want to have to send the leachate out of town and just cost too much money. So that’s where we are with that. And again, we’re still trying other things. It’s just going to be, you know, until we get that third tank on, and we’re not violating, so that’s the most important thing. So I just wanted to give you an update on that. I said I wouldn’t the last time I was here, and that’s where we stand with that. Besides that, honestly, it’s just been business as usual. A lot of maintenance is when we do a lot of maintenance at the plants, usually we’re not outside, and that’s pretty much all I have for you this evening.
Okay. Shane, I notice on the work order history, most of its, you know, miscellaneous cost is zero, but there are some that are quite high and a few low ones. What’s the reason for that?
So when you see that cost, some of that is money that we spent, some of that is stuff that we had in inventory. So what you’re usually going to see the biggest cost is the E1 pumps, right? You’re putting in brand-new E1 pumps. You’re doing nine to 10 a month. That’s $27,000, $30,000. We’ve also done some big projects through capital, and we include that, and that’s what you’re seeing also.
Actually, the one that’s just on this page, 19, it’s the annual hoisting equipment inspection.
So all the, anything with a hoist has to be inspected by OSHA regulations once a year, and there’s less and less companies doing it, and the price just keeps going up and up. So once a year, that cost is going to hit.
Okay, but I mean, that wasn’t taken into account when the budget was made? If it’s annual...
It comes out of the repair and maintenance account, which is built into our contract. But we include all that cost in, so we basically have a system that tracks everything. And once a month, I print out anything that we’ve done, whether it came from capital, whether it came from the hourly money, and you’re seeing that cost.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Just on, I apparently missed what you were saying about the pump station.
So the problem...
It’s the Route 20 pump station.
Right. The problem is the force being between the pump station and the plant is just too small. And we’ve looked into upgrading, and it’s $4 million. So when we get into this situation, the last time it was $15,000 to run pumps so that we don’t overflow, which is what we’re doing today. So, and I think, and honestly, this is probably the third or fourth time, I’ve been here 18 years now, that this has happened. So if you do the math, right, let’s just say it’s $30,000 per event, you’re up to $120,000 versus digging up all of Route 20, it’s going to be easily $4 million.
And a huge inconvenience.
And a huge inconvenience.
People are used to it.
Yeah, Route 20?
Yeah.
It’s only Route 20.
It’s only Route 20. Yeah, because, I mean, what goes in the pump station is what comes through with the pipes and everything. It’s not ground water.
So the pumps can actually pump more water than the pipe can handle. There’s the problem. It’s like a choke point. So when it gets to a certain point, we have to bring in trucks, because if that overflows, it’s going to go into the water that runs by the wells, and we don’t want to get into that.
Okay, thank you.
So unfortunately, this has become like a standard operating procedure for us, but it’s very much cheaper than the alternative.
Anything else for Shane? Shane, anything else for us, my friend?
No, that’s it. I hope everyone has a Happy Holidays.
Happy Holidays, brother.
All right. I think we are moving on to Ms. Heather.
Hello, Heather.
Hello. Good evening. Happy Holidays, everyone.
Thank you.
So you do have my operation, my reports from October and November.
Basically, pretty much standard procedure. Obviously, we’ve had a much wetter than whiter last couple months, which is a good thing, but I know what’s coming. Today, obviously, was pretty hairy, and actually, last week was pretty hairy, too. So these large storms coming now have been wreaking havoc, and I know that we had a lot of trees down today. We still have roads closed because of trees with, and power lines. We were out doing a lot of drainage, ditch cleaning, trying to get the water back off the road. We’ll probably find more damage tomorrow now that things have subsided. I know there’s some ditches that need to be patched up up on Cedar. I was up there earlier today. Edge of the road is definitely washed away, but so far, so good as far as nothing major that I know of, as far as washouts that way. But we will be evaluating more tomorrow as we go on. We’ve been, for me, this season is busy with doing budgets and capital budgets and getting quotes and things of that nature. In addition, I’ve been interviewing, as you can see, based on the agenda, so, which is good news. We are getting more staff coming in to help us with plowing. But again, we are still short staff for contractors, and we are still short on temporary hires. So if anybody is out there and is interested, we are still hiring people directly to work for the town, as no plow drivers in our trucks, and we are still interested in getting additional contractors in, and the information can still be found on the website. Also, just a little, so I did tell everybody that I would give an update of what I knew about what’s going on with New Boston Road and what the issue is over there. So it is a flooding issue that is being caused by a clog in a culvert pipe that has been clogged presumably by beavers. The beavers, it’s a five-foot diameter pipe. It goes from the area of the exit ramp from 84, coming off of 84 onto 20, going westbound. That’s where it started, and it end, and it discharges over near the cemetery, basically right near the end of Maple Street. So it’s a very long culvert. There isn’t a lot of flow coming out the other end right now. I have seen the other end of it, and there’s about 16 feet of water above the top of the culvert, or above the culvert. The clog is located 11 feet in. The DOT has brought in divers to go down there and actually look at the condition and where the clog is, and that’s how they know. So at this point, they want to depress that water, pump that water down, and where it’s overflowing currently is New Boston Road, because the elevation there is actually lower than now the elevation’s coming down the ramp and everywhere else. So that’s the low point right now, and that’s why it’s overflowing there. They are hoping to put pumps in. They had to put a pipe across New Boston so that they could discharge the water on the other side. So that is what they were doing last weekend. They hit a lot of rock that they weren’t expecting, so it took a little bit longer and caused a little bit more delays. And then, of course, we got over three inches of rain. So I assume that they will be starting their pumping operation again and trying to get that water down. They have to get that water down considerably before they’re going to go in there and attempt to free that clog up, because it’s a very dangerous situation for the people that need to do that work, and they’re really not sure how they’re going to. They’re hoping if they can lower it down, then they can loosen up that clog and free it up. So they have some more work to do this week, so you’ll see people in that area still working, I assume, probably all week.
Like one week, or you think it’s like a two-week project? When can they actually go and try to, once they get the water down, they’re going to try to unclog the pipe?
Correct.
It’s like a month project, do you think?
It, it’s going to be...
I just had some people asking that live on that road.
I don’t, I don’t know that we know. I don’t, they shouldn’t be in the road. They will see the trucks there, and they’ll be off the edge of the road, but they won’t have to be in the road anymore. They have the pipe across the road that they won’t have to be doing work in the road.
And the weather may impact this as well.
More rain.
The weather may.
Right, and it depends on the weather, obviously. Today, obviously, impacted them greatly. They had started that operation, but they couldn’t continue it because of the rain. So like...
It’s a few weeks, though, really.
Yes, it depends on how much rain we get, how much precipitation we get, and how fast they can pump it. It’s a considerable amount of water. Like, it’s a small lake, so they are really pumping for a while. My understanding is they pumped almost, they almost got it down a foot before they turned the pumps off, because they knew the rain was coming, and that was like one day. So 16 feet...
Are we putting, like, salt? Because this resident was concerned that when it was cold, it got icy at the bottom of...
Mass DOT has been salting that religiously when it was, when it was doing that. Hopefully, once they get the pumping operation, there’ll be no water on the road. They won’t have any of those problems. As soon as they get it down so that it’s not overflowing onto the road, we won’t see any issues. So that was their goal. I think for a while today, it was actually working. It was low enough, but it just became too much water and overcame the systems that they had put in place. They left where they did the construction, they left it so the water could run in there, but it was overwhelmed. It couldn’t handle it all. So we’re lucky tonight, it’s not going to freeze. The temperatures are going to be above freezing all night long. But Mass DOT really was on top of it and was not just salting Route 20, they were also started salting up New Boston, because they knew the water was being dragged up that way. We haven’t had to go out as the town and salt that area at all. So they really have been very watchful of what has been happening there.
And just for the, I’m sorry. And just for the people at home, because I’ve had a few calls, the states in carrying this cost, right?
Correct.
Because there’s a lot of people standing around, and I had people calling me, what is this going to cost?
This is all Mass, this is all Mass DOT, and, yeah, no, this is all Mass DOT, and I know they’ve had a lot of, I, we joke, because there’s all these people standing around and we think doing nothing, but they’ve had a lot of people out there trying to figure out how to handle this, because it is maybe not unique, but is very critical, and it’s in a very critical area, and it’s very dangerous. So, you know, they thought they had a plan, that they were going to bring in a crane, and they thought they would be able to open it up with the crane, but when they sent the divers in is when they found out that the clog was actually inside the pipe. So that adds a whole nother level of complexity, and it’s not, you know, it’s not us dealing with an 18-inch culvert that’s clogged with a beaver. This is a five-foot culvert that’s clogged, and it’s also under major infrastructure of, because that culvert goes under 84 both ways and Route 20. So...
Clog is under 84.
Yes, under the ramp for 84. But it also continues, it’s not, that’s where the clog is, but the culvert starts there and continues under all those, that infrastructure. So they have to be very careful and systematic about what they’re doing and making sure that they’re not going to cause a problem downstream or another clog in that culvert downstream. They have to be methodical about this. It’s, you know, can’t just go in there willy-nilly and damage the culvert or cause a bigger problem, because it literally, the amount of water that is there could cause major damage if it’s not handled properly.
And it’s, the pressure is considerable.
And the pressure under 16 feet of water is considerable. So we want them to handle it properly, because a mistake or something that goes wrong could be catastrophic for that exit ramp with major damage or other parts.
So there’s engineers standing around. There’s early engineers standing around.
A lot of engineers.
So there is a lot of people. I’ve been trying to stay away, to tell you the truth, but there have been a lot of people. And, I mean, I give them, they’re trying to think of different ways to get the water down so they can do the work, which is the proper way of doing it. So causes a little bit of delays, but they’re trying to get the water off the road. They know that that’s their main goal at this point, to get the water off the road at New Boston, because it’s not helping them at all. It’s on 20. It’s their road, they’re still responsible, and to get the water down so that they can undo that clog. And hopefully, in the future, figure out a way to do some continual maintenance there.
All right. Any question?
No, I was just whispering.
Okay. Any other questions for Heather?
I would just say, residents, if you do have tree branches, limbs, major limbs that you can’t move yourself, or clogged drains, don’t feel like you’re inconvenienced. Do let us know, because we can’t be everywhere, our eyes can’t be on everything, so there might be places that we don’t know about. So please, don’t feel like you’re, somebody else already called it in. We’ll just put it on our list. If we’re already getting to it, we’ll get around to it, so, okay?
Okay.
Thanks, Heather.
Thank you, Heather.
All right. Robin.
Yep, very quickly, thank you. We had a very successful New York trip a couple weekends ago, thanks to Annie and Recreation. And we actually, as some of you know, our library’s closed, so we have some reduced hours since they’re sort of operating out of here. So some of our part-time librarians, instead of losing all their hours, we had them assist with areas that we normally might have to bring people in or wouldn’t have assistance, and they’ve been really helping fill in on some levels of service. I also want to add, I put a Facebook post about the fact that our charter and survey went out. Some of those library workers assisted in stuffing all those envelopes. Lynn Gerard, to her credit, put together an amazing operation, saved the town about $10,000 or $11,000 in mailing and preparatory costs for mailing by getting groups of people. Michelle was there, our new, Crystal was there, our new admin from across the street. We were still able to maintain our level of service at Town Hall and save about $11,000, because Lynn really made that effort. She just looked at the...
It’s a lot of money for mailing.
It’s a lot of money for stuffing the envelopes. It was going to be 20-something thousand, and now it was back down to like 8,000 or 10,000 in just the mailing cost, because we were able to do this. So a thank you to Lynn for, you know, taking that initiative, and a thank you for everybody who did what might not be the most enjoyable of jobs for the day, but...
He stopped 4,000, was it 4,300?
4,300 envelopes in a day and still managed to maintain their phones and everything else that they needed to, so, and thanks to the library staff for also pitching in. And a thank you to the fire department, December 16th, Santa trolled through town.
I was on 20 by sawdust, and at first, I thought that was like a major fire, because we, and I’m like, oh, my God. And then all of a sudden, no, no, it’s Santa. So I was like... Quite the procession, it was, and they were early.
Well, they were moving too slow to go to a fire.
Yeah. But I mean, also, fire trucks and police cars and...
Right, I know, I saw it, too. I was coming down New Boston when they went out.
It’s great to still have that kind of stuff go on, and so that’s really nice, and thanks to the fire department for that. You have an item on your agenda. We had brought forward DISH to make a presentation on what they hope to do. That still has to go through planning and all of those. Obviously, they’re going to invest large amounts of money with attorneys and plans to even have the opportunity to move forward. In the meantime, they would like to at least have the ability to sit with me to talk about what I would be envisioning for price for a monthly lease and whatnot, and I just want direction from the board, and it’s a consideration, I don’t know if it’s an actual vote or just a consideration and discussion, that I can at least approach the discussion of licensing and what the terms of that would be that I would eventually bring back to you. We would do a license instead of a lease. A license we can end at any time, with like a 30-day notice kind of a thing, as opposed to a lease, which has a more defined term. The other issue with the lease is it goes out to bid. I can bid a minimum monthly amount, but I might not be able to get as much as I would like. I have to go with the highest bid, and I also don’t know at that point who might else might bid, and if they would be as, let’s say, the plan would be as mild, if you will, comparatively, is this one is compared to others, and so I’m looking for the board to at least allow me to engage in the discussion of preparing a license document that then would come back to the board for review.
What’s the board’s thought on that?
I think it’s a good idea. I know there are some people that really are against the whole idea, but they don’t fully understand that this is not a tower.
No.
This is an antenna, and it’s a benefit monetarily to the town, but more than that, it’s a benefit to all those people who don’t have service now or don’t have good service, and there’s absolutely no commitment having discussions.
No.
So, you know, that’s, I think you should go ahead. Also, in the meantime, could you also get what we have for the seniors?
So I’m in the process, and that one is a lease, and I’m also looking at doing the same thing with that, doing a license versus a lease. That one has some complications, because our easement with the church is in question, and it appears that the easement that everybody’s been using is not actually the right easement, so I have some survey issues and whatnot. So I’ll give you an update on that one. I plan on just giving you a general update on that one. It’s complicated.
Yeah, but the money and, you know, the easement can’t be too, I mean, that went through like a breeze.
The easement, T-Mobile pays the church for the easement, so that’s really not our deal, but there’s been discussion of us getting involved in that deal, so there’s a lot of nuances to it. But then there’s also going to be the renegotiation of the terms of the monthly lease. That 20-year-old payment number is probably not going to be the same payment number we would look at again.
Right. Robin, I know you have on your update, they must know that the financial terms that I will be negotiating are within the parameters that they believe are reasonable. So what are you going, I assume you’re going to check with other towns and see what they’re getting, because...
Yeah, absolutely.
They would have no idea if we’re getting a lot or a little. If you came back with something without a comparison of other towns, I’m not going to be able to make any kind of educated input.
Right, no, we would get you some background on what a standard number is. We know what we get on St. Anne’s and what we were getting for 20 years on the St. Anne’s Tower with T-Mobile. We know that that number is likely going to be low, and so I, and I’ve talked to some people on what they are generally getting for that type of...
More recent.
Yes, more recent agreements. So, yes. And that’s why I need to be able to at least start talking to them about it, because the number may be higher than they think, it may be, you know, and I need to at least have that discussion, because they don’t want to, if I’m going to come in at a number that they’re not going to support, they don’t want to spend all their money on lawyers and plans and everything else, which I can respect that, so.
Any other thoughts?
No, I agree with Mary Blanchard that nothing wrong with moving forward, talking, and it’s a benefit to the town.
Thank you.
I concur also.
Thank you.
So I think you can go ahead. I don’t think there’s any...
Okay, it doesn’t really need a vote. Okay. We can skip if you want, and we’ll hold on Chief Desert’s contract, because it is an agenda item later.
Well, I was surprised we pay him.
He just wants to be judged that much. He said to me, I don’t need any money, Robin, just extend.
You don’t get any money.
Yeah, you don’t get any money. So if you want to hold on that, we’ll do that as an agenda item.
Okay, that’s fine.
Okay. The gateway sign, so I have to thank DOT. I don’t, it’s terrible to say this, but I don’t often do this, but Chris Silver at DOT deserves a shout-out. He absolutely assisted me in getting this through the permit process. It was like herding cats, because it doesn’t usually come through a town administrator’s office, so it was not getting engineer stamps and all those things. He really pushed it through for us to give Joe the ability to try to start getting those posts in the ground. We were hoping the sign would be up before Christmas, but Joe was hoping to start today, but obviously, Joe wasn’t starting today. So, but it does look like the weather will be favorable for the next week or so for him to get footings in, which means that at least, hopefully, by the new year, we may have our welcome sign.
We’ve been waiting, and it’s very exciting.
I was thrilled when the permit got approved. I sent a big email to everybody, Jean, everybody, like, woo! So just a happy update to you on that. And that is it on my updates.
Great. So we’re going to move on to the action items. Chief, you’re up. So we have consideration and possible action to appoint Leah Corvo. Am I saying that correctly?
Yes.
Thank you. Has a full-time dispatcher with the Sturbridge Police Department, effective December 19, Thank you. Has a full-time dispatcher with the Sturbridge Police Department effective December 19th, 2023, at the hourly rate of $22.90.
Good evening. Tonight I bring Leah Corvo to you. Leah is a local resident, lives in town here. She's a graduate of Tantascu. Although she doesn't have dispatch experience, she does have customer service experience, which is a great trait for our communication center. And from interviewing her, I think she will do very well in the dispatch position. So I'm bringing her, completed the background check, and we recommended that she start as a full-time dispatcher December 19th, the hourly rate of $22.90 an hour. Now, I did tell her that she has to do like a five-minute speech. She got a little nervous, so.
Now, overall, you don't have to.
I appreciate it.
What shift is she going to be working?
Well, they, they have to train on every shift. So just so they get a variety of it, then, then it goes out to, because it's all union members, they bid on the shift at certain times of year. So.
All right, questions from the board?
I have none.
All right, well, you look like a great addition. Do I have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the appointment of Leah Corvo as a full-time dispatcher with the Sturbridge Police Department effective December 19th, 2023, at the hourly rate of $22.90.
Second?
Great. All those in favor? The ayes have it. Welcome aboard.
Beautiful, we should shake everybody's hand.
Congratulations and welcome.
Congratulations.
Welcome.
Welcome aboard.
Best wishes.
Thank you. Merry Christmas to you.
Merry Christmas.
All right, think your contract's up, chief, next.
That's all right. You don't need to stay for that.
All right.
So as you can see from my, my memo, the chief, I'd like to have his contract in place if I can before this one expires. As you know, even with unions, that's always my goal, so we don't have retro. And it, I think for morale purposes, it's always better to have things solidified. The chief did request, I think one of the key things for me, and I was, I was actually pleased with this. He requested a five-year instead of a three-year. It's not unusual to have a three and two renewables. Up to five is acceptable, given his tenure here and his status. And frankly, if I'm still here in three years, I don't want to be worried about looking for another police chief or negotiating another contract or anything like that. So I had absolutely no reason not to support and actually heartily, just from my own experience, I would, I will say this publicly, please go on so I can say it. I've worked with a lot of police departments, big, large cities, small towns. I will tell you that from the administrative side and the structure and order that happens within the building, outside of the building, I met the most wonderful police officers that do great work. Inside the buildings, it can tend to be chaos. And I will tell you that of all the towns I have worked in, this is currently the most functional police department administratively that I have seen. There's always ups and downs with any organization. But given that, that is a boat I don't want to rock. And when he asked if he could have five years, in this particular case, I was very comfortable bringing that forward too. You see this more specific terms, the financial terms. He didn't ask for any salary increase on his base just to go with all the other directors. We did a little bit of an adjustment on his EMA. He was paid less than other EMA directors. We looked at Uxbridge, for example, they were getting more. And he does oversee the police fire dispatch, which even if we do down the road do some type of a consolidation, he will be a lead on that as the person overseeing. So he would have to deal with that transition. So we increased that to a percentage that increased the number a bit. But other than that, he wanted to be on par with the unions for parity for longevity. So it all seemed very reasonable to me. And again, I, I really am very grateful to have a chief that has it smooth. And I talked to him probably less than I've talked to any police chief because I don't need to. And that's, that's a great feeling.
Great. All right, comments, questions from the board?
I don't have any questions.
I'll just say I will fully support the five-year. I think that benefits the town. He's very well-liked and he's good hands-on and administratively, he's the whole package. So I am wholeheartedly in support of a five-year contract for him.
I agree. I fully support a five-year. Does an excellent job.
Great.
All right, then do I have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the renewal with changes of the police chief's employment contract.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
All right, we are moving on. We already did the MC, which is the DISH license. And then we are up with Heather. Sorry, Heather, I should have gotten you this out of the way.
Go back. That's okay. I'm going to be here a little while.
She's stuck here.
Okay, so consideration and possible action to approve the appointment of Matthew Orb- but how am I saying your, the name?
Orbits.
Orbits. Has heavy equipment operator for the Sturbridge Department of Public Works at the starting salary of $29.05 per hour. Appointment is contingent upon satisfactory completion of the pre-employment physical and drug screening. All right, so what's going on, Heather?
So, good news is you have three different appointments here tonight, but Matthew has come to us. He is actually recommended by one of our other employees and came in, interviewed very well, has experience in another GPW, is already on par to go get additional licenses. So we're very happy to be able to bring him on. He already knows the ropes, done it, snow plowing, all of it. So he'll come fit in really nicely and fill that spot of our open heavy equipment operator, which will help us out a lot. He couldn't be here tonight, but, you know, I wholeheartedly support his.
Great. Questions, comments from the board?
I trust Heather's judgment.
All right, then do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to occur from the appointment of Matthew Orbzett as heavy equipment operator for the Sturbridge Department of Public Works at the starting salary of $29.05 per hour. Appointment is contingent upon satisfactory completion of the pre-employment physical and drug screening.
I'll second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. All right, we are moving on to action item E. Consideration and possible action to approve the appointment of Jeremy Chenier as a laborer-driver for the Sturbridge Department of Public Works at the starting salary of $23.51 per hour. Appointment is contingent upon satisfactory completion of the pre-employment physical and drug screening. All right, so Heather.
So I'm pleased to bring you Jeremy Chenier. He is a local Tantascu graduate, recent graduate, has taken it upon himself to go and start taking classes for our CDL, contacted me. He also has worked for MassDOT in their summer program, so he does know a little bit about what it's about and is very interested in learning and coming on board and being one of our entry-level labor drivers. So we're very pleased. We're hoping that we can train him upright and get him some good experience here and that he will be a good asset to us, new asset.
Great. Questions, comments from the board?
I know, I think it's nice that we have a local and locally educated and youth.
We have the best teachers, so we got the best students, right?
I just have one complaint. Could you take your hat off? No, I'm a stickler on that.
Yeah, no worries.
Old-fashioned.
The, great, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Jeremy Chenier as a labor driver for the Sturbridge Department of Public Works at the starting salary of $23.51 per hour. Appointment is contingent upon satisfactory completion of the pre-employment physical and drug screening.
Second?
All right, all those in favor? Welcome aboard.
Congratulations. We'll see, we'll be talking.
Welcome. Congratulations.
Hey, congratulations.
Welcome aboard.
Besides, you have a nice head of hair.
Yeah, don't hide it while you got it.
But then I looked at you and I'm like, that's what I'll do, I'll go my-
All right, great. All right, we're moving on to consideration and possible action to approve the appointment of Andrew Corbin as mechanic equipment operator for the Sturbridge GPW at the starting salary of $29.10 per hour. Appointment contingent upon satisfactory completion of the pre-employment physical and drug screening. How are you doing?
See, I've been very busy doing it.
I know.
Pleased to bring you Andrew here. He came in and interviewed last week with us, and we were very impressed with, actually, he came in, I'm not really sure he knew he was going to interview for equipment, for, for the assistant mechanic equipment operator. And he was, and we started speaking to him, we were like, yeah, you have the training. He spent some time with our current mechanic, and they showed him around the shop. And I think they hit it off pretty well. He was very impressed. This is a very good position for us to be able to fill. It's been open for a quite considerable amount of time because we really hadn't been able to find somebody that was a good fit. And Andrew really can step in and step right up to be able to do that for us. So we're very pleased to be able to bring him on board. I think he'll be a good fit for both of us. And I am happy that he's here.
Great. Any questions, comments from the board? All right, hearing that, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the appointment of Andrew Corbin as a mechanic slash equipment operator for the Sturbridge Department of Public Works at the starting salary of $29.10 per hour. Appointment is contingent upon satisfactory completion of the pre-employment physical and drug screening.
Great, do I have a second?
Second.
Great, all those in favor? Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Thank you for going aboard, bud.
Welcome aboard.
All right.
Couple weeks. We'll be in touch once we get the physical results.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right, Heather. Gee, we are, consideration and possible action to determine the following items as surplus recommend, that you recommend discarding.
Yep, so you have, I'm sure we could go through and find some more items, but these are three vehicles, equipment vehicles that basically have been, are completely non-operational, and they're just taking up space up there. So I don't want them hanging around any longer than we need. There's the old Jeep that basically got redlined before, when it went in to be inspected. It's rotting out. It's got almost 200,000 miles on it. There is no value to this, and I really wouldn't want anybody else operating this vehicle, so it should just go to scrap. We'll just take it to a local scrapyard and get whatever we can get for, for scrap money, which you're allowed to do when there's not a lot of value. And the second one is a Ford Ranger, small Ford Ranger. Again, it's rusted out from underneath itself. It has no value, to the point it was basically dangerous. So we want to take, we have it off the road, hasn't been operated for like six months. Both of these vehicles, one has been replaced, the other one is, was on capital B replace for having some issues finding the vehicle that was supposed to replace it. If you haven't seen, I did finally get my Ford Explorer to replace the Jeep. So after, after a little bit of procurement energy, we were able to find one, which literally was energy, like calling around different local Ford dealers and saying, do you have one? Do you have one? Do you have one? And finally, we were able to find somebody that was able to bid on it and actually produce a vehicle because they will show them on their website. If you haven't, if you've been looking for vehicles lately, you'll know this. They show them on their website, and they really are not in stock. So that's what's happening with the other vehicle. We can't locate a Ford Transit, which if you know where they all are, they're out delivering all our Christmas presents right now. But that's what, they were supposed to replace that, it was supposed to be a small van. And the other one is the Loader, which I do want to send to auction, but this will allow us to be ready to put it out to auction when we have an auction list. It won't have to come back in front of you, but it will be something, there is, it's not operational. We know that the transmission has gone in it, which is a major repair on a piece of equipment like this. That's why we selected to buy another one. But again, it's just sitting in my yard. I'd rather have it ready to be going out for auction and not, you know, at least we know we've already handled everything on our side. So when we get to the point where we're ready to do another town-wide auction, there is some value in that equipment that somebody else who has one might want to buy it for parts and everything else. Or they might be a really good mechanic and might have one of those with a transmission that they can put in and get it up and running. I don't know. But it would have been a major effort for us and a pretty costly one of what we usually have to pay. So that's all those are.
Oh, great. Any questions?
Nope.
Do I have a motion?
Okay, it's really actually a two-part, right?
Yeah, the first two should be two-part.
So I make a motion that we approve Heather's recommendation of discarding the 2006 Jeep Grand Cherokee and the 2011 Ford Ranger.
All right, I'll second that. All those in favor? Great. And then do I have a motion about the 2006 Loader?
Okay, then the, I make a motion for the 2006 John Deere F544J Loader for future auction for parts only.
I will second that. All those in favor? Great. Hi, Heather, I think that's everything. Thank you for coming in.
I trust you don't have any questions about the lead salt contract?
I don't think so.
We'll call you.
Yeah, I mean, I'm totaling that question. Yeah, all right, we're moving on to action item H. Consideration, possible action on the 2024 seasonal population increase estimation form for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Alcohol Beverages Control Commission.
Okay, we do this every year and we always come up with a number of 20,000.
Sounds good.
Never been questioned. No one's ever said, go do a hand count. Okay, so I make a motion that we- increase the seasonal population to 20,000 for the year 2024.
Do I have a second? All those in favor? The ayes have it. Okay, we're moving on. So I'm, you know, on the salt, unless somebody has an issue, I'm just going to make a motion, or unless there's conversation? All right, I'm going to make a motion to authorize the chair to execute, oh, I should not make that motion. It's authorized. All right, do we have any, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to authorize the chair to execute a contract with Leeds Grouping, doing business as Leeds Salt to deliver treated road salt for the price of $94.70 per ton delivered.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. All those in favor? The ayes have it. All right, moving on to J. Consideration and possible action to accept the donation in the amount of $250 from the Federated Church of Sturbridge and Fistale to the Sturbridge Police Youth Account. Do I have any conversation, or do I have a motion?
I just want to say thank you. I think they do this every year. I think it's the proceeds from the sales there.
Pumpkin sales.
They give a portion of their profit, which is very generous of them. They're good neighbors.
Excellent neighbors. All right, with that, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the donation in the amount of $250 from the Federated Church of Sturbridge and Fistale to the Sturbridge Police Youth Account.
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. All right, action item K. Consideration and possible action to accept the donation in the amount of $250 from the Federated Church of Sturbridge and Fistale to the Sturbridge Fire Department. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Oops, second.
Oh, second, sorry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, do we, all those in favor? It's been a long week already, gang. Great.
Well, I was in and it's been a long week.
I'm a little further into that one. But all right, we're moving on to item L. Consideration and possible action to accept, accept the resignation of Lisa Bowden from the Special Events Committee effective after the first meeting in January 2024, which has not been scheduled.
I just want to add a comment because I've worked with-
Why don't you make the motion?
And I'll do that too. Well, then I'll comment during discussion of it.
Yeah.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept with regret the resignation of Lisa Bowden from the Special Events Committee after our first meeting in January 2024.
I'll second that. Mary, you had a comment?
Yes, what I wanted to say is I've been working with Lisa on the Special Events Committee for like five years. And for those residents who don't know, she was really the brainstorm behind the farmer's market. When special events first formed, we sent out a, a survey during Oktoberfest and put it online about what some, some things that residents might want to see in Sturbridge. There was, where she worked, a farmer's market, and she was very energetic, very determined to get that off the ground, and she did. She's been our chair for the last five years and very professional. Also, very active for the last five years in being on the special, the volunteer group that put on the farmer's market. Now Recreation has taken it over, and they're doing a great job too. But for a long time, special events oversaw it, and she would give like every weekend, every Sunday of her weekend to that. So I just want to thank her for that. And we're going to try to keep her involved as a volunteer. But she's, she's done her, her part, so.
All right, well, I think we still need to have a vote. So all those in favor? The ayes have it. All right, moving on to action item M. Consideration and possible action to open a special town meeting warrant.
So moved.
All right, I'll second. All those in favor? The ayes have it. All right, Robin?
So just very briefly, I added at the very end, you'll see two easements. There's no financial implication to the town for these. The only reason they're even there is that one of them is not completely passive. Some of it will be parking. The owners of these properties have agreed to this. It would not even be on a town meeting warrant. It would typically just go to the board for acceptance, except for the fact that because it's parking associated- it's parking associated with it, there's just a legal loophole that indicates it has to go in front of town meeting instead of just you all. So, I added on there, again, there's no financial implication. These easements are being given by the owners of the land.
Oh, great.
And then, and thank you, by the way, to the Trails Committee for all the work on this. Brandon Goodwin and Tom Chamberlain have done all the legwork on this. Additionally, OSV's board has agreed to let us have an easement there to do some work. So, I'll brief you all on that as that gets hammered out. But that's on that. And then, the other thing is, as a result of today, I had to update it again, the sewer reserve transfer. We originally had, I believe, 50,000, and I've upped it to 80,000. That's because we spent about 30,000 today pumping water. And so, again, those are some of those unexpected, and I had listed in there originally, we had a few unexpected expenses with sewer, and we just need to transfer from that fund balance. So, those are the two changes. Hopefully, this will be it because it has to be out to the public by January 8th for the January 22nd meeting. I'm waiting for FinCom to set a date for the, their hearings.
Okay. I just had a question on the Article 51 that we had already voted on.
Yes.
Town vote to transfer from.
Yep.
Free cash, the amount of $50,000 to the reserve fund. But doesn't say which reserve fund.
The general, the overall reserve fund.
The overall.
Yeah.
And also, we don't normally do free cash that way.
We don't normally need to.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was just this case because of that underground fuel tank, what we had for free cash got eaten up a little earlier in the year than we normally would like, and we just don't want to get stuck if something happens in March and have no money. And all this money sitting in free cash that we can't access.
We will get from Barbara, though, the latest in free cash.
Oh, the certification. She's worked on that. She's, she's had some issues, but she is working on that list.
And then, the department, each department.
Yes, the turnback.
Turnback.
Yes. You will get all of that.
And we also need the, what's left in the fund balance, sewer fund balances, and then water fund balance.
Yes. We'll get all that to you.
Because I know in the past, Mary, I know, was on the board sometimes with the fund balances, who have used it to offset the rates.
I've been in favor of that for several years now. I mean, it was standard practice, and I still think we're exceeding whatever our financial policy is on that range of what we need for free cash in relation to the size of our budget. So, I, I really would like to try to give something back to offset the tax rate. We all always did it, I mean, up until our last town administrator, and he did it for one year. And I really haven't been given, we haven't really been given a good justification for why we can no longer do it. That's my position on that.
All right. So, I think we have, so Article 53 has been increased to $80,000, and Article 55 has been.
Added. Yep. And that's all I need.
Do I have a motion on Article 53?
I'll make a motion to approve the amount of, change the amount from $50,000 to $80,000 from the sewer fund balance to the sewer reserve fund for unexpected costs incurred.
Okay. That would be place and support.
Placing it and supporting it?
Yep.
You're, you're moving to place and support Article 53?
Yes.
Yeah.
Just have to ask support.
Yeah, it's just the beginning.
Sometimes we place something and not support it, just.
Right, right, right.
Or to split.
No, but I was confused about place and support. What are you talking about?
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. All those in favor? The eyes have it. All right. Moving to Article 55. Do I have a motion to place and support?
I'm not making it.
I'll make a motion to place and support 55.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The eyes have it. Okay.
Thank you very much.
A motion to close the warrant to the special town meeting.
So, I'm going action item N, consideration and possible action to close the special town meeting warrant. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great. All those in favor? Great.
Thank you.
All right. So, we are on to action item zero, which is the license renewals.
So, you, you have two documents.
What's that?
Oh. I was going to pack though. Come here. I'm not choosing one more time, but.
I'm not too worried about it. I have zero concerns about that.
Item zero.
All right. On to zero. So.
So, we have two documents. One is the spreadsheet of all of the license applications that had everything fully in order, signed off, checked off, and are ready to roll, sign, and be handed to the business as soon as they want to come in and get it. The second document you have, and you should have had an updated one when you came in, a second, a hard copy that's updated, that was not in your packet. I updated it a little later today. That is any licenses that had some things still outstanding. And in working with our, our attorneys, none of the things they have outstanding are reasons we would actually deny or not give them a license. And we can't technically vote them pending, but how we vote it is, we vote to approve the license, but it is held by Michelle until compliance with whatever issue is outstanding. And so, you have a list of what is outstanding on these. Some of them are very minor. You know, Sturbridge Antique is a pro forma sign off. Police and Fire really have nothing to do with them. It's just part of our own checklist internally. But you'll see here, and then, I believe that the chair has some language for the last one on that list, so.
And Kerboy is a bit distinct.
That's a distinct one. So, I would, my recommendation would be that you vote the main list as is. You vote the second list with the exception of Kerboy to be approved but held pending fulfillment of requirements. And then, the third would be the language the chair is going to provide.
Yeah.
For Kerboy.
So, with the, the, well, let's just list them for the public.
Yep.
The licenses for Brush It Off, Thai Place, Stonewall Grill, Highland Orchards, Soup to Nuts, Sturbridge Antique Shops, and, and, yeah, of those six, should not be part of a block motion, and we'll have a, should have a second motion, which we can discuss it. But with putting the, and then, including Sturbridge Flea Market and Kerboy, pulling those off the list if they're on this list? Are they on it?
They're not on.
Okay. Perfect. So, does anybody have?
On the spreadsheet?
Well, regardless of whether or not, yeah, they are. I see Brush It Off right there.
Yeah.
So, with the exception of those license renewals, does anybody have any comments, questions, concerns about any of the other license renewals provided?
Flea Market is F-L-E-A.
Okay.
Well, he works flea.
All right. So, but with that, but putting aside those eight, does anybody have any concerns or do I have a motion to approve, renew those licenses?
I don't have concerns.
I don't either.
Okay. I'll make a motion then that the Board of Selectmen sign these approved licenses, then we'll have another motion.
Yeah. We'll deal with the other ones, why. And so, do I have a second?
Second.
Great. All those in favor? All right. Excellent. So, that's that.
Okay.
Except we have to sign them all.
So, and to the Brush It Off, Thai Place, Stonewall Grill, Highland Orchards, Soup to Nuts, and Sturbridge Antiques, I think that the way that the vote has to be, we want to vote to approve and sign pending fulfillment of any outstanding requirements.
Okay. Proven, sign, and hold.
And hold, yeah.
Not pending, yep.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Does it, does anybody have any questions about that based upon the issues listed on the sheet provided by Robin? No discussion. Do I have a motion?
So, I'll make a motion then that the Board of Selectmen approve and sign and hold the licenses for, what is it, five? The other five?
Six. I think it's six.
Six.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I have a second?
Second, Matt.
Great. All those in favor? Excellent. The eyes have it. All right. And then, on Kerboy, because of, after consulting with counsel, which the recommendation was to make a motion effectively because, about the particular property that's being utilized to see that they are in, let me just find the actual language here. The license is approved pending inspections by the town staff certifying that the place of business is at 71 Moshpog Road and is suitable for the license purpose by March 1st, 2024. If such inspections do not occur, a public hearing will be scheduled before the Board of Selectmen to determine suitability and other appropriate matters of compliance as to the extent they exist.
So, they basically have till March to make sure.
Yeah.
To allow the appropriate.
Well, and they'll have a license. We can't, without process, we cannot withdraw, nor would we want to. But the point is, based upon the complex issues on that property that.
That have been going on.
Yeah. So, and those aren't, and there's the conservation issues, but it's broader than that. It's Board of Health, particularly around the wells, and fire around any, you know, volatile compounds or unsafe compounds that might be on the property. So, it's, you know, so that's basically, I can, I can make the motion from the thing because I have the words, but I just, does it make sense to everybody before we?
Yes. So, in the next three months, I get it, the license isn't withheld, there's no due process, so we can't. So, in the next three months, Fire, Board of Health, and Conservation are going to inspect the property. Is that right?
That's, that's the logic. I think the, the actual process will flush out in the new year.
And they're compliant with allowing us on their property to do.
I can't really discuss that.
No. Yeah, that's, that's, we have to go in an executive session.
Okay. Got it.
So, without getting any further down that road, is there any other?
No.
Okay. So, I'm going to, let me find it again. I'm going to make a motion that Kerboy's license is approved pending inspection by town staff certifying that the place of business is at 71 Moshpog Road and is suitable for the licensed purpose by March 1st of 2024. If such inspections do not occur, a public hearing will be scheduled before the Board of Selectmen to determine suitability and other appropriate matters of compliance to the extent they exist. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. And we will send a letter out about that particular one, Robin?
Yes.
Great. All right. So, that's those. All right. So, I think that's everything. So, old business. Mary Blanter?
Um, Robin House, the fire truck that's been out of commission.
I will check on that. I will check on that. Sure.
And do you know when they're going to be able to start broadcasting meetings from the COB?
We're close. They were testing it last week, I believe. They were over there testing last week.
They were. He had, he has all the stuff he needs.
Yeah. They've just installation, they were just waiting on some installation, but they've got the equipment. And so, we're hopeful within a few weeks they'll be back there.
It's also been quite a while.
Yeah, it has been. It was getting the equipment. They had trouble getting the equipment.
That goes.
The last department meeting.
Yep. So, he was, Bruce was hopeful the last, yeah, the last meeting, he was finally hopeful that we were getting close.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Hey, Mary. Chase?
No. So, no, is there any update on the status of the immigrants in town? Because they were supposed to, I thought that some were supposed to be leaving by November.
Yeah, that we, I have been notified of no changes in status. That 58, 59 rooms that we had before is the number we had. The only thing I have heard from the people over at the church, who do a lot of the media, sort of intermediary work, that many have been approved for working authority, working[1537.41]